Mayor, this one, um, let me see if we can reset this. But this is, this is a four-digit code that wasn't. Oh, password. You want password reset for what?
Yeah.
For your email?
Yeah, email. Okay, thanks. Okay, I think we're ready. Seven oh. Ready? Hello, everyone. It is February 18, 2025, and I will call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being broadcast via Zoom, oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council meeting in person. The city council meeting is available for instant translation in over 50 languages with Wordly and accessible via mobile phone, computer, video displays by scanning the QR code located on the title page of the agenda in the upper right-hand corner. So back to today's business, uh, city clerk Guzetta, please take the role.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Chua.
Here.
Councilmember Lamb.
Yeah.
Councilmember Leanne.
Here.
Mayor Montano.
And I am here. Okay, now we will, uh, do the pledge of allegiance and is there anyone that would like to lead? William, would you like to lead the pledge of allegiance? Okay. Oh, that's another thing I wanted to recommend if, uh, next time we could put the words on the screen, the pledge of allegiance, that could be something that we could do. Okay, go ahead, William.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, William. Okay, so now invocation, and I saw this morning that it's my turn. So as you know, we all take turns doing an invocation. And this month is my month. So I attended a Taiji Men, um, New Year's, uh, celebration, Year of the Snake this weekend, and they gave out some little, uh, words of wisdom, like philosophies. So I will read one of their words of wisdom. Excuse me. Words of true wisdom activate one's conscience. Hearing the truths of the universe purifies the heart. Through self-reflection and self-improvement, we cultivate fields of blessings with our hearts. Staying focused and tranquil leads to the af- to the attainment of wisdom. Let us strive for daily self-betterment with diligence and dedication. We shall take prompt action guided by conscience and fueled by the power of hope to courageously overcome challenges. Let us share love, care, and kindness to warm others' hearts while joyfully radiating positive energy. Heaven helps the kind-hearted who cherish the opportunities they are given, bringing peace, safety, and happiness into their lives. And this is by the Worldwide Taiji Men, uh, Organization. Thank you very much. And so now moving on to, uh, presentations. We have a presentation today for the Rare Disease Day proclamation, and if my colleagues will join me at the down there. Welcome. So, uh, today we recognize Rare Disease Day, which is an opportunity to raise awareness for the more than 30 million Americans affected by over 7,000 rare diseases. These individuals and their families often face significant challenges, including delayed diagnosis, limited treatment options, and difficulty accessing specialists. While some rare diseases are widely recognized, many remain unknown, leaving families to advocate for research and support on their own. This year's theme, More Than You Can Imagine, highlights these often unseen struggles. So join me, Mayor Carmen Montano, and the Milpitas City Council in proclaiming February 28th, 2025, as Rare Disease Day in the city of Milpitas. And, uh, we have this proclamation, and if you all want to come down, uh, come, uh, down here for this proclamation. And I, I will read the proclamation. So it says, whereas Rare Disease Day is observed annually on the last day of February to raise awareness about rare diseases and their impact on patients, families, and communities. And whereas a rare disease is defined as a condition that affects fewer than 200,000 people in the United States, yet there are more than 7,000 rare diseases impacting over 30 million Americans, including individuals in the city of Milpitas. So now therefore, I, Mayor Carmen Montano, and on behalf of the Milpitas City Council, do hereby recognize February 2025 as Milpitas Rare Disease Day. And we want to take picture?
Yes.
I don't know who, any, any of you want to say something as well? Want to take a picture first?
Yes, picture first. Oh, thank you, sure, thank you. And just address here, right? Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, um, to the mayor and city council and the staff that are here. The city of Milpitas has always answered the call for the past couple of years. Uh, they are one of the first to answer our emails, and, you know, sometimes I'm sending emails to so many of the cities and the counties, and with, you know, no response. And to have, um, you know, I'm a South Bay resident. I was born and raised in the East Bay, but have lived here for 20 years. And I really appreciate the fact that the city of Milpitas recognizes, uh, the rare disease community, and I think it's very important. Somebody asked me, you know, what's up with the proclamation? It's just a paper. And if you don't mind, if I just want to kind of like explain, it's like a proclamation does a lot of things. It raises awareness. It encourages support. It recognizes the advocates. It influences policy. Um, and it also fosters community engagement. When we first started, we might have had like one or two rare disease patients come to our event each year. And every year, it's grown. I've had emails and messages from patients, uh, from the South Bay saying, I had no voice. I didn't know what to do, but now I know that, you know, cities like Milpitas, Santa Clara, um, San Jose, support me, and I have a voice. So I want to thank the mayor and city council, um, and the staff here, uh, for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. So now let's move on to the public forum. Members of the public are invited to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Please note that oral public comment may only be provided live at the city council chamber. A public forum will be limited to three minutes. City clerk, are there any folks that want to speak?
I have no public speaker cards, mayor.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make any comments, not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements of conflict of interest from our city attorney.
Thank you, mayor. I ask the mayor and each council member whether he or she has any financial or personal conflict of interest related to any of the items on the agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
I further ask the mayor and each council member to please disclose any campaign contributions of $100 or more received within the last 12 months from any of the parties entering into contracts with the city on tonight's agenda, or contributions received from the development project applicant for development projects on tonight's agenda.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
None.
Councilmember Chua.
None.
Councilmember Lamb.
None.
Councilmember Leanne.
None.
Mayor Montano.
And I am none.
Thank you, mayor. Let the record reflect, no report complex. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we will read the, uh, Milpitas City Code of Conduct, and we will have Vice Mayor Barbara Deal read the conduct.
Thank you, mayor. Um, be respectful and courteous.
Did you get it? Press it.
The Milpitas City Council Code of Conduct. Uh, just a comment. I wish, uh, at some point, uh, we eliminate this as, uh, we have been reminding ourselves, uh, being professional, being respectful, and, you know, it's just like a muscle memory, or it comes within. And I believe, uh, that, uh, the members of the council now are respectful enough and decent enough, uh, to be reminded. But here it is. Be respectful and courteous, model civility, avoid surprises, praise publicly and criticize privately, focus on the issue, not the person, refrain from using electronic devices while on the council days, disclose conflicts of interest and affiliations related to agenda items, separate governing from campaigning. The council speaks with one voice after making policy on issues. Respect the line between policy and administration. Council will hold one another accountable to comply with this Code of Conduct.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And so now moving on to the approval of the agenda. So is, does anyone have any changes before making a motion? We have, uh, councilmember Lamb. Oh, good, hold on, let me see. There you are. Okay, did you get it? Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to pull out C5 and C6.
Well, we'll do that next, mayor, under the next item for consent calendar. This is for the overall agenda.
This is for the, this is for the overall agenda, uh, when we go to the consent calendar, then you can.
Okay, excuse me.
So, uh, we have councilmember Leanne. So it was moved by councilmember Leanne and seconded by councilmember Chua. So now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am an aye. And now we'll move on to the consent calendar. And staff, or any comments?
No comment, no comments, mayor.
And then now council, we have, uh, councilmember Lamb.
Yes, uh, mayor, um, I'd like to pull out C5 and C6.
Okay, so C5 and C6 from the consent will, uh, will be pulled out. Any other changes? If not, is. I'm done with the C5 and C6 being pulled. Okay, and it was moved by, excuse me, councilmember Chua, and then seconded by Vice Mayor Barbara Deal. And so now, and those are, and the two items that were pulled out are C5 and C6. And now we will call for the vote.
We do need to call for public comment, mayor.
Oh, public comment, sorry about that. Anyone from the public want to make any comments on this? On the consent calendar?
We have no public speaker cards.
Okay, seeing then we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbara Deal.
Aye.
Councilmember Chua.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne.
Aye.
Mayor Montano.
And I am aye. Okay. So now, we will go to public hearings, which is recruiting, hiring, and vacancy update. And we will have our city manager, uh, it would be, uh.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have our HR director.
City manager, you can read the title.
Yeah, so this, this is an update for the council on recent, uh, activities in the city's human resources department under recruiting, hiring, and the vacancy update, and we have our HR director, Human Resources Director Kelly Parmley here to provide a overview.
Yeah, good morning, mayor. Good morning. Wow, good afternoon, good evening. Oh, it's evening. It seems like we had a long day. It's been a heck of a day, isn't it? Uh, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, thank you, councilmember Chua. Uh, and members of the public, I'm the HR director here, Kelly Parmley, at the city of Milpitas, here to give you an update, um, something that feels, um, exciting to me. Uh, I know we've had some difficult conversation prior to this, um, but I hope to offer you some good information, um, about our employees. So if you go to the next slide, just a couple of quick, um, reminders about the purpose of the report that we've put in front of you. The first is just to give you some insight into a couple of labor market trends, things that might affect the city's ability, uh, to attract and hire new talent. Um, the second part is just to give some highlights about key recruiting and hiring processes here, um, at the city of Milpitas and human resources, and the partnership that we have with our departments in order to do recruiting and hiring, um, all to be sure that we're competitive, open, fair, and equity-centered. And then, um, the third one would be to provide you an update about some of our successes in sustaining a vacancy rate within the range of seven to 10%. We've been aiming for single digits, and we've done that well in the last six months. Um, and also to offer you some information that's required of us by AB 2561. So I just want to remind us in the next slide, and I love these pictures, um, they warm my heart. Um, you know, as an HR director, I care deeply about our employees, as I know you, as councilmembers do as well. Um, and it is because of our employees that we're able to deliver high-quality services, and that's dependent on us, uh, supporting a dynamic and engaged workforce. And this is from our fall event where we do an employee engagement opportunity. Uh, I think some of you may have been there. Um, we also, at that event, did, um, some catch-up with our city service awards where we weren't able to deliver those during COVID. Um, so it was a joyous event. It's an opportunity to celebrate our employees, and we all are deeply aware that without them, we cannot deliver services to the community. On the next slide, um, just a little bit of a reminder about some work that, um, our PIO has done. Um, appreciate this series. Um, here are some QR codes that later you can go look at, um, which are some clear videos, um, really well-done videos from our employees about them and how they have delivered services and contributed in significant and heartfelt ways to the city of Milpitas. Charmaine, I'm really grateful to the work that you've done here. Appreciate it. Um, on the next slide, just to give you a little bit of a visual about where our full-time employees live. So we're authorized, you know, in terms of a budget at 455 FTE. We're not quite there yet because we do have some vacancies. Um, but this gives you a sense of about 16% of our employees live in Milpitas, about another 24% live in Santa Clara County, and then about 60% of our employees live outside of Santa Clara County. I don't know if that's information you've seen before, um, but it's also important information in terms of how we understand where employees are coming from in order to contribute to this community. Um, this first bullet here in terms of full-time employee demographics is really important. Nearly 50% of our full-time employees have been with the city less than five years. Now, that doesn't mean that they're unseasoned folks. You heard earlier from our Director of Finance and our new Director of Budget, that that number of combined years that they have between them, and they've been here for less than five years. What it does mean for a bulk of our employees, though, is that they're trying to figure out and understand the city of Milpitas, um, and how we do things here. And as you have heard earlier, with an enterprise resource planning system, we hope to support them more effectively to do administrative work. About 33% of our, uh, full-time employees identify as female, 66% as non-white, and then you can see the composition there by bargaining unit. And then one of my favorite slides, the next one, which is, yes, you can go ahead and clap, a fully-staffed HR team, and about half of them, yeah, thank you, thank you from the audience, half of them, including myself, uh, have about a year or less here with the team. Um, and this is from one of our events. Um, I do want to acknowledge that here I have two, our two recruiters, Jasmine and Selma, who are here behind me. Um, again, less than a year's worth of experience, but really well, um, seasoned in terms of their understanding and commitment to, um, our recruiting efforts. So the team is, uh, complete, and on the next slide, we'll just offer you a little bit about what we do, just as a reminder. There's a, it's a comprehensive, um, array of things that we do in HR for a small team and a small agency. We do recruiting and hiring, which is what I'm here to talk about tonight. But also, we make sure we are focused on the health and well-being, including the safety and workers' compensation program for our employees. Of course, you're aware of our Labor and Employee Relations function, making sure that we're, uh, implementing our MOUs and, um, bargaining for successor agreements, but also, uh, we are the folks who steward any employee relations issues. And then the one which I came here to spend some time and attention on, haven't quite gotten there yet, is how do we support learning, growth, and development for our employees, something that's going to be really important for the future. On the next slide, um, as I joined the city and thought about, uh, assess the landscape and talked to lots of folks, um, it seemed to me that three things really needed to inform the work that we're doing in HR. Um, having had several directors in the last few years, hiring a relatively new team, and also being able to join on to an enterprise resource planning system. We have about three objectives that are kind of focusing our work and where we pay attention. And the first is number one about creating capacity for our people. So when we're looking at lean times and potentially looking for areas where we may have to reduce expenditures, one of the things we can do is create more efficient systems so that our people can do, um, what they do well, which is be, um, humans, uh, and not spend so much time on emails, uh, in spreadsheets and other things. Uh, a system can help make that work more effectively. Um, the last one to the right is something that's incredibly important, in particular for government, but certainly any workforce, and that is to engage, grow, and retain our people. But I'm here to speak with you a little bit about Powered by Our People, which is how do we modernize or rebuild our system of hiring to ensure that it's competitive, open, fair, and equitable? So we have a diversely talented, um, employee population and can create a pipeline of next-generation employees. Uh, as many of you may be aware, government's not particularly popular these days, and so trying to attract the next generation becomes really important for us. How do we speak to college and, uh, K through 12 students? Perhaps even folks who've, uh, retired and want to come back and spend some time in government and offer their talents. So we'll be thinking about those things. So in terms of an update for you, which, um, the agenda report spends, uh, spends a little bit more time in terms of detail, um, on this, but the first part is about, um, the public sector labor market. If you want to go to the next slide, and then go to the next slide. Four things I want to offer from a report from an entity called NeoGov. They're essentially the industry standard in terms of, uh, local government recruiting, and they offer several important reports to us every year. Um, we've recovered since COVID in terms of being able to open jobs and, and post them in government, but we're still getting lower numbers of qualified applicants per open job. We did see an increase this last year. Um, many of my colleagues, uh, here at the city of Milpitas, hiring managers and directors will offer some anecdotal evidence that that's true here at the city of Milpitas as well. When you've got 30 or four applicants from which to choose, um, it becomes very difficult in the recruiting, uh, aspect of our work. Um, we're also, you know, aware the agencies are reporting turnover, which means we need to pay attention to things that will keep our people. Um, and this will be no surprise to any of you and many of my colleagues. Um, there are some jobs that are really difficult to feel, to fill. Law enforcement, engineering, planning, utilities, trades. I spent a little time with our Director of Public Works, and he'll tell you how difficult it is to recruit for some of these positions, and certainly our Chief of Police. The last thing I'll just offer here that NeoGov has pointed out, and we haven't looked at our own data on this, but we may get more people who are clicking on, uh, applications for government, but they're not converting those to actual applications, and so why is that? Um, and so, um, thinking about how we teach, educate, and encourage folks to not only look at our applications, but be successful with them will be an important thing for us to focus on. The meat and potatoes of this on the next slide is to talk about recruiting and hiring. This is, again, is Selma and Jasmine. This is at something we did a few weeks ago with our hiring managers, uh, workshop with about 14 of them to offer up what we've made by way of changes or things in terms of strengthening the recruitment process. So I'm grateful for the things that they're doing with our hiring managers. On the next slide, I'm grateful to councilmember Lamb, who suggested I use this opportunity to do some recruitment here in a public forum. So just a reminder that this is our city of, of Milpitas Careers page, uh, which you can find from our website. Um, there's a jobs page, uh, where folks can go to those job opportunities, and then you can also subscribe for alerts from folks from the community. If you don't see a position that's already open, but you can see something in our list of classifications, you can actually subscribe to have something pop into your email saying, hey, this job has recently come for posting. On the set, on the next slide, at a very high level, um, just to remind us that, um, government recruiting is a little bit different than private sector recruiting. Um, it's really important to remember that we have union partners who are also participants in this process and that they have, in many instances, have prescribed things within the memorandums of understanding about how we do and how long we take in order to do some things, particularly in the posting and interviewing, um, arena. Um, but also that as government folks, we have a special responsibility, um, to our community to make sure that we're methodic, that we have process in place, and that we can be open and competitive, fair, and equity-centered. Um, a reminder in this first box, in the planning HR recruiters, Jasmine and Selma don't do this alone. They actually do it with hiring managers. Our hiring managers are the subject matter experts, and the HR folks are the process experts, and so it's a partnership between the two. Um, not every, um, hiring manager wants to be, uh, an expert on the hiring process, and yet they're often very excited about how do we quickly get somebody in to fill that vacancy. Um, we then move to a posting where you would show up, not only on our webpage, but typical postings and, um, government jobs and a few other places. Sometimes we use handshake for our part-time folks, um, and so postings go out, and then we have an interview stage, right? And so in order to get to an interview, you have to screen applications. And sometimes, um, folks, uh, think that that, uh, should be done more expeditiously, but what happens is, is that our recruiters do take the first take to see if folks get screened in to make sure that, um, uh, we're looking at minimum qualifications in a consistent and standard way. Then our hiring managers go through a blind process to then further screen, so they don't get names, but they get to look at and assess candidates in order to bring them in for interviews. There may be other assessment techniques, but that's generally the way that it happens. And then there's a process by which we make an offer. And then there's a process by which we make an offer. And that conditional offer then also usually has some form of backgrounding process. That's the part where folks in fire and PD in particular will offer to you that it takes a long time and for good reason. And others, it's a standard and then others have some other requirements for the background process. And then we fill with a final offer. Easy peasy. And then we bring them in for onboarding. Just to give you a sample of one year's worth of applicants, you'll see there are almost 3,000 applicants. And this I think was from January 1 of 2024 for all positions that we posted for, all the way to December of 2024. Oh yeah, look, the title of the table tells me that. And you can see where those applicants came from. It's no surprise that 60% would come from, you know, from Santa Clara County, just to give you a sense of the rest of California. But right here, and just if you're curious on the far right, in June, Jasmine and I did a real quick pilot to go spend some time in a community park at a concert and put an HR table up and surprised people with who we were as a human resource team. And some folks actually did sign up to get alerts. And we're very curious about some of the things that we were handing them and what we did at the city of Milpitas. On the next slide. Potentially overwhelming table. I'll just draw your attention to a couple of things here. It took us quite a bit when Lou told you earlier about our systems not being incredibly supportive of our ability to pull together data timely and accurately. It's taken quite a bit for us to get, I've started when I got here, but the two recruiters and I have been working very hard to get some good data. Essentially what this tells you here in the gray columns is that we've got 35 hires over the first six months. 12 of those were internal in terms of either being transfers or promotional, which we love. And then 23 were external folks, folks from outside of the city employment. And then on the other side, you'll see the columns in yellow and you'll see 29 folks actually left the city. Now 17 of those are mostly retirements. There's a few other situations in there and then folks who leave voluntarily or choose other places to go. It's hard to create promotional opportunities in many places, as directors will tell you, because we are a small agency. But these are, you know, one here, one there, folks going for good reasons, other reasons, different reasons, moving all over the place. And so what this offers to me is that we're doing a really good job of recruiting. We hired total of 60 last year, 35 puts us well on the track to exceed that, not other circumstances, you know, impinging on that. And then we need to look at, you know, essentially how do we do what we can to retain folks, but also just be prepared for retirements and make sure that we're backfilling folks where it's absolutely needed when folks leave. That's recruitment and hiring. On the next slide, vacancy rates. I get asked this question a lot. I spent a lot of time at the city of San Jose sorting out our data and clarifying what's in a vacancy rate and what's not. But essentially the denominator is the authorized positions, our permanent positions that we have authorized or you have authorized with us at the city. So in this case, it's 455 at the start of our budget season. And that at any given time, we are looking now to get consistent. The month after we've done, closed out a month, we're looking for good data. And vacancies at that point would then be divided by our authorized positions. And so if we had 100 authorized positions and 10 vacancies, we'd have a 10% vacancy rate. So the things that affect the vacancy rate are when folks leave and create a vacancy. Actually, when we do internal promotions, which is a good thing, it actually creates another vacancy. Or if we added positions, that would also affect our vacancy rate. Yeah, I think I'll take a breath. Ooh. Yeah, so single digit vacancy rate. I don't have updated data from Santa Clara County. City of San Jose often gathers on a, on a pretty regular basis from the other agencies and just hadn't updated it. But I've been with HR directors from other parts of the county and many are struggling with double digit and higher vacancy rates. And so what you've got here are vacancies in that second or third column there. We currently have 43, or sorry, as of December 31st, we had 43. And then I have some very, very smart directors, folks who are regularly looking to see whether or not a configuration of a team is the best that it can be. Are there ways to think more strategically about how those could be configured? Or how we could take a vacant position and transition it into something else that makes more sense for business operations? And so they, a few of our directors and departments have held vacancies. As of December, it was 11. Some of those would be proposals that might be coming forward. And so when you adjust for those strategically held vacancies, you can see our vacancy rate stays in about the single digit. So I'm incredibly proud of the work that the recruiters and our hiring managers have really worked hard with them to get us to this space and place. And just because there's 43 vacancies doesn't mean that we don't have any of them like actively, you know, in process. About 28 of those are in process as of December 31st. So that tells you that we aren't waiting, we aren't holding, we're managing those across to recruiters and also in conjunction with departments to figure out what's a priority for each of the departments in terms of hiring. I think we're nearing the end. A really important thing that we need to offer up is vacancy rates by bargaining unit. AB 2561 requires us to look at vacancy rate by bargaining unit. Our union partners across the state have been trying to get information about what our vacancies look like for their particular unions. And when it reaches a 20% threshold, a series of other things kick in in terms of reporting. As of December 31st, all of our units are below 20%, as you can see here from the table. And so we're doing our due diligence in terms of reporting that out to you by bargaining unit as of December 31st. And then I'll just offer, just by way of conclusion, before I take any questions that you might have, just a reminder that our, on the last slide, that our labor market continues to be challenging. Just because we've been successful doesn't mean we're going to continue to be successful. So I do worry about our applicant pools and our ability to attract folks. We're going to work hard, we're going to continue to work hard with departments to continue to have a fair, open, competitive and equity centered process, but also be creative and flexible, potentially with our union partners as well. Oh, this, this picture is just adorable, isn't it? Another testimony to our employees, Erwin, Bryce and Alan were in the parking garage. And these are the folks that, you know, just randomly get to talk with, sorting through recycling material from employees to see if we might support employees to do a better job of recycling. But this is what I just love about our employees, had a great conversation with them that day. And lastly, sustaining a single digit vacancy rate is the result of great work from our departments with the support of HR. And we do need to turn our attention to focusing on employee growth, retention, engagement, because that's going to be really important for the future. And with that, I welcome any questions that you might have. And just a reminder that this, we weren't asking for any action tonight, but mostly to come here and ask you to accept the report so that we can put it into the record.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Kelly. Are there any questions for the HR director from staff? We have.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynn.
I know I requested for you to come back with the information, so thank you. With the 11 out of the 43 that you are planning on keeping it vacancy, vacant for whatever reason, do you see that it's going to be for long or just temporary, short term?
Yeah, it's hard to cast a global picture for you, council member. I do appreciate the question. We would have to talk sort of department by department because each department director has a different strategy about what that means. I would say seven or so of those 11 have to do with public works. And as you know, our director, Christian Dorenzo, is really thoughtful about those. So we would expect some of those to come back. The others I think are a question, you know, do we wait? Do we hold? Let's see kind of how the business operations play out. I know a couple are in finance, for example. So I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but it was sort of like a case by case or department by department question? Did I, was I successful in not answering your question?
No, it's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Is, are there anyone else? Do you have a council member Lamb?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just a general question. I'm new on the council, but I learned that most of our employees comes in to City Hall and work four and a half days instead of five days. And we are service organizations.
Yeah.
How do we provide good service if we only work four and a half days?
Yeah, I might, so, great question, right? It's been a practice prior to me getting here. And I want to, I just want to offer a clarification on that. It's not that people aren't working, it's that they're not working on site. So folks do have a full schedule. It could be a 980 for sure, but if folks have a five day schedule and Friday, for example, if here in City Hall, we're closed at noon and they work a half day on site, they're still working. I mean, it's not as though folks aren't working, it's just not on site, if I understand your question.
Yeah, but if we are closed, when people comes in, how do they get help?
Yeah, that's a great question. Now some of it, so I'm going to ask the city manager to jump in here in just a moment. But I do know that we've had conversations about this and that there is currently a conversation happening about making sure that all of our services in City Hall are open five days a week. That'll take a little bit for that conversation to happen because we do owe our employees who have had a schedule to not be on site for either part of that day or half that day on Friday. We do owe them some opportunity in order to arrange their lives. We can't make it happen overnight, but my understanding is that we'll have a conversation and make that happen so that five days a week, folks are on site and staffing those functions. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a schedules? When would that happen?
Not yet, but I'm sure that we will offer one up to you. I'm confident.
Yep, we, we actually, if I may, we actually had a conversation, well, we started a conversation with it several weeks ago. But we had a conversation just this morning with the executive team, so the department directors. And we're working, we will begin opening City Hall all day on Friday on March 1st. So we're working toward that and it's, you know, most of the department, I just want to clarify that most of the departments, police, fire, for example, they work 24/7. So it doesn't affect them. We're really talking about a very small number of departments that are here, located here at City Hall, primarily the development departments, planning, building, engineering, land development, and then the finance department. Because just my anecdotal observation is that most of the people who are coming here on Friday afternoon, who are not able to get in to this, are here to pay their bill, their water bill or your utility bill. Sometimes they're here to get a permit. So each of those departments, left it up to the department head to figure out a new scheduling model so that they can have at least one person here from each of those departments or more than one, depending on what their needs are to serve the, the public on Friday afternoon. So we'll, we, starting March 1st, again, we will be open all day on Friday.
Thanks, city manager. I didn't realize that we had set the March 1st date, but I do know the conversations were happening. Yep. Other questions, comments?
Any more questions from anyone? I have a couple, Kelly. So yeah, if you can go to slide six. So IT, if you can go to slide six. Okay, so we have full time employee demographics. So my question is, what about the part time employees? How many, you said we have 455 part time employees. I think this is the right slide.
Yeah.
And then, but I'm wondering part time, because I do know that some departments have a substantial amount of part time timers and so.
I'm really glad that you brought that up. I should have mentioned it earlier. Let me just look for something right here. I do know from looking at some recent data that we have, quote, on the books, in other words, employees, part time employees who could be called up to serve or could be deployed to some sort of program or service, a little over 200. But any given time, there's probably 100 plus that are actually, when I look at payroll data, actually getting paid. Renee may have some different data than that in terms of rec and community services, which is where most of the part time folks are deployed. But for example, last year we hired about 106 or so. So depending, you know, because part time folks can move on and off in terms of the, of time sheet and being paid. It's not, it's not really easy to sort of put our finger on exactly how many we have at any given time, but some, somewhere between 100 and 200, but less than 200 are probably being paid or working at any given time. Looking to see if Renee is going to.
So you just mentioned our parks and recs director. So that tells me that most of our part time employees are in the parks and recs department.
Most, yeah, and there are some certainly in public works, but that also counts interns. We have interns sort of sprinkled in different places, so, but I would say mostly, yep.
And let's say that they want to move up or they want to become a full time person. Do we have a point system, like they get preference because they've been there longer and they know, they've already know the ropes?
Wouldn't that be nice? And it doesn't work that way. That's a great idea. If you want to change, you know, it doesn't, it just doesn't work that way. But certainly we would make sure that folks are able to apply successfully. But I can't give them credit for, you know, I can't say, just like I can't say, if you got a Milpitas zip code, we're going to zoom you to the front of the application.
That would be nice if people get preference for living in Milpitas to work in Milpitas.
Yeah, we might propose, we might end up in other challenges if we did that. But yes, I hear you.
And so, yeah, so, so people, and then so people that apply and they don't get the position, do we do follow up, like, thank you, thank you very much for applying?
Yep, there's a communication that comes out from the recruiters.
Cause I did hear some people that applied and they never got a response. I was like, what, really?
Yeah, I've heard from some of those folks too, yeah.
So yeah, I just want to make sure that we have the courtesy to, if they didn't get the position, to at least let them know, hey, you know, thanks, but no thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. Sometimes with large applicant pools, for example, you could miss somebody, you know, something could fall through the cracks. But Jasmine and Selma, we've talked about a communication plan about, you know, at what point can you communicate with people and we should communicate with people? And it's never when people want them, but we do a good job of the follow up communications, yes. And they're actually generated in part.
That was a couple of years ago or it was four years ago. I don't know if it's changed. So, well, but as.
But people let me know when they haven't heard, trust me, they call me and they text me.
Oh no, you weren't around me at the time, but maybe hopefully things have changed. So slide 19. This is in regards to vacancies. Yeah, I was wondering if, if, if there's vacancies, does that mean that in those positions don't get filled, then what happens? I mean, is, and we budget for it. So what happens is it?
Yeah, yeah, so I might need the finance folks to speak specifically, but I'm trying also not to use the word that council member Tua doesn't like, which is unspent salary money. Is that, does that, does that, right? The common vernacular term that we would use or it would, it would become vacancy savings. It just, what it really truly means is that in that particular fiscal year, we haven't spent those salary monies because folks, that position has been vacant. However, I will also just want to make sure I put a side note in there that sometimes those positions for the short term need some temp service work. We might hire a temp agency to backfill some of that work. Or if it's really strategically held, I think the SCADA technician is one of those positions, right? It's being done by something else in order for it to be prepared for us to hire. So somewhere in there is a non, maybe another non answer to your question, but I tried to answer it.
I guess my question, my real question was, so where, where are the, you said there's vacancies, but where, where, where are those vacancies? Where are the majority of those vacancies?
Most of those are in public works. Of the 11, I think about seven of them at that point in time. And again, it's because Christian's thinking thoughtfully about the organization and how do I do this body of work? And also do it with the right positions? And so, you know, as a vacancy becomes available, you might not fill it right away because you're wondering, how might I, how might I hire a different position with this position in order to do this body of work? That's the general strategy. So again, in a separate briefing, we could certainly bring you additional information on what those look like.
Okay, and then one last one. So you mentioned about, you mentioned, I think it was earlier, I think I forgot to put down the slide number. But the demographics, so in, do you, do you recall what slide it was?
It was on. Um, it was on.
About uh, it was.
It's after the map.
Job titles and the demographics.
Mm-hmm.
I think it is that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so which ones, I mean, do you have some kind of a graph or something that shows or management, is there diversity in the management positions?
It's a great question.
You know, or equity?
Mm-hmm. We have to produce, yes, thank you for the question. I didn't mean to cut you off. I did you finish? Yeah. Yeah, um, so uh, once a year, the feds require us to produce an EEO report that um uh we have to report vacancies, or sorry, we have to report employees in a variety of race and ethnicity categories by certain job classifications. I don't have that data in front of me and I know we're in the process of producing that for this year. Um, it's not easy to do. It was hard for me just to get this sort of gross number, but certainly we could produce additional data for for you, you know, potentially by union, which is a good way to kind of do it. Um, unrep versus, you know, other union codes. Um, the classifications are a little bit difficult to try to do it at a at a very granular level. You get very small numbers and I don't want to inadvertently reveal people's personal information. Long way of saying that we can do that and if that's something you for you like you would like for us to put together, I certainly can do that for you.
I think doesn't, doesn't the um that department in the state, don't they do the, don't you guys give them the information and they do a graph?
Um, the feds do. We just haven't produced the data for this year and I haven't actually seen the the report. I'm used to doing it in a different place and so I know I have a conversation to have with staff member, but produce it and then we can turn it into a graph.
Yeah, so out of those thirty-three percent, how many, how many of those females have management or supervisory positions?
I'm happy to share that data with you when I get it pulled together.
Okay.
In a graph.
Any more questions, Renee? We have a.
Linking lights over here.
Uh, we have a, oh, I put the wrong one. Councilmember Lamb.
Oh, I think councilmember Tua.
Oh, who was it? Councilmember Tua.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kel- uh Director Kelly for very informative uh data. As you know, I like statistics and the ends purely statistics, so it's good. I like them. I I have a question, one quick question is probably, probably the city manager, city manager Ned. Do is we do we have a policy on the number of days that a staff can take as a as a remote, the off-site, off-site days in a week or in a month? Do we have a policy on that one?
Kind of, since the pandemic, uh we've left that up to the directors according to what their business needs are in their departments. Um, most departments take Fridays or have been working from home on Fridays since the pandemic. Um, I think um other departments may have an additional day that they take um if if they're able to do that. Again, some departments work twenty-four seven, uh fire department has an, or excuse me, please, yeah, fire department has an entirely different schedule. So it's really, I've left it up to the departments.
Hmm. Yeah, maybe we should look into um a policy.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've had that.
And we recently have that discussion.
On my radar.
Yeah, we can't have, uh, I mean, unlimited number of days off-site. I mean, that's what I concern about.
Mm-hmm. I I I hear the question and I think it would be helpful to have a thoughtful answer to that. I know we have looked at some data by department. Um, from my perspective, the department directors have been very, very judicious about how administrative folks who are able to work remotely actually work remotely. It's it's not a crazy. My preliminary look at some basic data was um folks have been very judicious about it.
Yeah, and we need to be really careful, as you mentioned earlier, they're not off that day, they're working from home that day. And and we do have ways of following up to ensure that people are being accountable for the time that they're working from home.
Yeah, yeah, and it does, it does merit a look. Mm-hmm.
Right, cause.
One other thing I would add, and Kelly, you might have data on this. I I and there's been a lot, I've read in a lot of media that for organizations, and this may be different for for government, but for organizations increasingly with younger generations, I'll put it, um, that in order to remain competitive, then that that's almost an expectation from some people going into the workforce that their employer will provide uh work from home opportunities. We're very limited compared to some other cities as well as some other organizations.
Yeah, and it does factor into whether or not people uh accept an offer and and applicants are asking, um, do I have any opportunity to have anything in my schedule that allows me to work remote? Again, I think it's really important that we name that a bulk of our employee population does not have the opportunity to work remotely. Our folks in public works and public safety, so many of them don't have schedules that allow that or the kind of work that allows that. And yet, um, our difficulty in being able to recruit folks from administrative ranks, um, it is an attractive option for folks to have some flexibility along those lines for sure.
And just to wrap this up, and the conversation that I've been having with Kelly is that um we're far enough away from the pandemic now that I agree with you, uh council member, that we need to have some standardization as to how many days off and when, or not, now I'm doing it, how many day work from home days? And then and also uh how many work from home days and when are those days taken if they're offered at all? And where as a start, we're going to reopen City Hall, you know, starting March first for the uh full day. And then we'll we'll look at some of the other policies that we have in place and continue to make changes as needed.
I just wanna commend you on that, the the changes that is fairly coming soon. You know, manning the the front desk at least and rearranging to make sure somebody's there. But the next step will be, like you said, is standardization and we wanna look into that. Yeah.
And I I might um put the spotlight on Kelly a little bit. As the director of her department, I know she's had conversations with her staff around these issues and sometimes those are, they have to be, we'll call them courageous conversations because uh, you know, it 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 does require staff to make changes. But I think as we go along, if if we we don't wanna do it all at once, but if we we will continue to make changes to bring some consistency to the way that people are using those work from home opportunities.
Yeah, and and along those lines, since you gave me a little bit of an opening there, city manager, I'll just offer that it does require a conversation about how we use our onsite time differently. Um, but also we have to respect, from my perspective, this is just mine, is that people have rebuilt their lives differently, both in terms of how they care for uh other folks, how they manage their schedules, they've moved further out, all of those things which are their business to resolve. I'm not gonna try to resolve those for employees, right? However, I do need to give them enough time, enough agency and enough voice to to work those out so that they stay. Um, and we've had some of those challenging conversations in in HR because we do need to spend our onsite time differently, a little bit more consistently. Um, and so I think we'll have those conversations in other departments as well. But again, I'm proud of what the leadership has done because when we looked at the initial data, folks were pretty darn um judicious about how they were um uh utilizing uh remote time for some of their folks. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. And now we'll go on to, I think, councilmember Lamb.
Um, do you know the average age for retirement for city of Milpitas employees? And um when they are, when some of them are approaching the retirement age, um, do we have plans in months ahead to fill their vacancies?
Yeah, so it's a great question, councilmember Lamb. Um, and you'll see from the folks uh in that one column of the of the chart in terms of other separations, most of those are retirements. Couple of things, I don't know the average age. Um, and that varies and depends based on what retirement um level people are in. Um, and so uh folks in public safety may retire a little bit sooner if they started much earlier. So I I haven't looked at the data. I'm not sure what the data would tell me. Um, the second thing is, is that every single one of the directors here at the city of Milpitas has asked for us internally to have a conversation about what does succession planning look like? And I think that's the conversation that needs to be had. Um, and it's a conversation from my perspective as an HR director who cares in particular about fairness and uh equity, that those conversations around succession planning are about what we need as a, as an organization, not necessarily how do I tap these five people to move to be the next thing. Opportunity open for them for sure to make sure that we're preparing them. But how do we as an organization look at succession planning? What is this organization gonna need five years from now, ten years from now? What are the skills, the competencies, and then we're preparing a large number of folks to be able to fill those positions? So I think we're gonna embark on that conversation very soon with an outside facilitator um to do that. So that feels very positive to me. The third thing that I also am quite sensitive to is that we need to not be in the position or the place of inadvertently overly influencing people toward retirement. So in other words, I don't do anything until somebody's actually filed that paperwork. Um, so I wanna make sure that we're not inadvertently influencing folks to believe that we're trying to push them out um because that's not what we want. However, preparing for them to leave is certainly a good thing. I don't, can't speak to what departments are specifically doing, but I know that it's on everybody's hearts and minds and that we are intentional um here soon about having a conversation about what that looks like because out the door goes a lot of knowledge and experience, right? And I hear that underneath your question. Yeah, I'm working with pretty, pretty smart people.
Yeah, that's exactly my point. Um, we need to get people up to speed and uh with uh all this experience, um, we don't want to lose the informations. Uh, we need to.
Yep.
Get someone trained.
Yep, I hear you loud and clear. I think my peers would agree with you. Yeah, yep, I hear you. In agreement.
Thank you, councilmember Lamb. Anyone else? We have a councilman, we have a vice mayor, Robert Dill.
Planning, so do we have anything in place? So we we talk about preparing uh employees for them to leave. I think that's how how you put it. But how about preparing the organization when employees leave? Do we have any a policy on that?
Could you say that last part again for me, councilmember?
So it's uh, so we're talking about succession planning on the uh side of employee leaving.
Yep.
So it's just like preparing employee to leave. How about preparation for the city for employees leaving? Do we have any policy or or programs for that?
I'm not sure I heard, I not sure I quite understood the last part of your question. What I think I heard, tell me if 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 I heard you correctly, which which is, are we preparing the organization for another person, another set of people or possible people to be able to step in? That to me is succession planning.
You you can phrase it like that, but yes. Uh, so what program does HR have uh in cases? You know, we're not pushing anyone out.
Yep.
Uh, but in in situations or you know, in times when people are set to retire, is there anything in place?
Yeah, I I think that's what I was trying to say to councilmember Lamb. Maybe I didn't say it very well. Um, but but we're embarking on that conversation as a leadership team here in a little bit, like what are we putting in place? I would offer to you that right now we don't have anything other than the creativity, the innovation and the ingenuity of our current directors. Like they're looking within their own organization, right? And this is why this conversation has come forward. HR can't solve this on our own, but what we can do as an HR function is facilitate the conversation about what does succession planning look like? Like what are we trying to advance and are the people within our organization prepared to assume those roles? Uh, do we have, do we have leadership training for them? Do we um have uh clarity about what skills they might need or what skill gaps we might need to fill? No, we don't have that in place for sure. Um, we just, you know, this much transition in an HR director over the few, three years doesn't means that we don't have that in place, but we're, it's it's been consistent since I've been here that my peers want to solve that.
Okay, let's continue that conversation, but hopefully at some point we have a policy.
Sure. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
May I add to that too? Um, so over the past six months, eight months, uh, the executive team has been working with a leadership development coach. Maybe every six weeks, eight weeks we'll meet her. We've been, um, and the training has been around communication, team building, uh, uh, goal setting, that sort of thing for the executive team. As as Kelly just alluded to, um, starting in April, um, we'll have our March, excuse me, March, um, we'll have our next, which I think is our sixth workshop with this particular coach. And and the second half of that meeting, we will bring in the assistant and deputy directors as well as um we've asked the director, other directors to identify other senior staff who might benefit from the conversation that we can begin talking to them about this very topic, leadership development, that as, you know, we we've reached the point as the executive team where um we're working well together, we're communicating well. Um, we have a a a common understanding of our goals and the direction that we're going in. And the next step is really to take that down to the next level and to offer them an opportunity for leadership development as well. So that that will begin this year. Um, I wanted to jump right into that and Kelly wisely said, no, we, you know, let's start with the executive team first and then we'll work our way down to the the next level. And so that that um I I'm very excited to see where that will go in the next year as the the next level down begins to participate in those conversations as well. So that's just, I just offer that as one example of some of the work that we're doing for leadership development.
Yeah, thank you for that, city manager. And and councilmember Robert Dill, I didn't mean to be dismissive with my sure. What I, what was on my mind when I said that is um, um, it's important that we actually speak to the people to see what it is that they need to be successful. And sometimes I've seen policies and programs, particularly in succession planning, that can feel very top-down and inclusive for a certain group of people and very exclusive for others. And so um policy is absolutely where we should go, that follow from that should be a program. Um, and for me right now, just opening the conversation to say, what should this look like is the thing I'm most focused on. So I was like, oh, yeah, policy, sure. Um, and I didn't mean to be that way, um, but I certainly believe um that what you're offering is absolutely correct.
Sure. Just kidding.
That was really funny.
Too serious. Going back to, I, well, uh, last, uh, on on that topic, how about, you know, those uh lateral transfer, cross-training or workshops? Maybe, you know, some people in public works wants to have a workshop in the police department, something like that. And it caters for mental health. It caters for, you know, for stress uh on the everyday job that you you have. And and it gives people opportunity to move around the organization and probably that would also some sort of solution.
This this idea of how do we have folks be able to engage with each other from across the organization is incredibly important. It is actually the reason why um Ned and Matt invited me to to come here. Um, it takes some thoughtfulness and it takes, quite frankly, a little bit of bandwidth, but you certainly, for as long as you have me, will will start seeing that to happen. We started last spring in bringing people together. What I'm hearing from you is something a little bit more strategic around career as opposed to just bringing folks together. Um, and how do I explore and understand what my colleague over here is doing? And what my colleague over here is doing and might I be interested in that or might I even aspire to that? Or maybe I know somebody else who wants to be that. Yeah, yeah.
See, we we made a planning director to a city manager. Okay, going back to our vacancies.
I was, I was just thinking that would have been really helpful if I had had a better understanding of what goes on in the police and the fire department. Before I became the city manager, I had to kind of learn along the way, but thankfully I have very patient uh police chief and fire chief that helped me learn very quickly as well as the other departments as well. So I I think your suggestion is a very good one.
Let's do the ride along.
Uh, job shadowing, what do you call it? Job shadowing, something like that. Yep.
Yeah.
You had another question?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, on the vacancies, uh, I think you said our good as we didn't hit uh two digits, right? For for some litmus somewhere. So the question is, how many of those vacancies, but I think it's seven, eleven, you know, are intend intentionally vacant?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that we need to fill in right away?
Mm-hmm.
And so-so, so-so vacant. Is is there a classifications? Means there is some sort of classification on those vacancies?
So I don't, I don't actually have the list in front of me. Um, I also don't want to speak for directors who are the ones who actually need to speak to why they held that. And I also don't wanna get in front of them in terms of making claims or things that are ill-informed as an HR director. Um, so I feel like that's something, what I'm hearing now from a couple of folks is that's more information that you would like to see as as council members or to know a little bit more. I I think of the seven that are in public works, those are would clearly need to be filled. So I don't, I don't necessarily see seven of the eleven, you know, um, suddenly not being needed. Maybe somewhere around seven of those eleven do. I also just don't wanna get into department by department without being informed and this doesn't feel like the right forum to do that. I wanna respect your question at the same time, uh, answer it maybe in a different way.
That's fine. Just just, you know, some suggestions, you know, uh, I'm I'm coining that question to to be uh effectively lean uh for for budget purposes. So if we determine that later on, you know, we have a talk with each director.
Yeah.
Uh, talk with finance and and, you know, maybe that that's a a solution of our.
Yeah.
Uh, dealing with uh the budget as well.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. I hear you. I'm also mindful that this conversation gets to be heard publicly and a part of that public is our employees. Um, and so I'm also mindful for. And so I'm also mindful for us to take care, in much the way that our finance director, Lou Skafrezi Howe, was offering in our study session about the thoughtfulness with which we consider the impact to employees when we have budgetary conversations, because some of those will need to be filled irrespective, and making sure that we have the right review on that, to make sure where it's actually needed and we actually need to do it, which we're going to do in partnership with the city manager's office. But some of this work cannot get done without many of those positions being filled. I just can't speak to them here. So I hear you in being thoughtful about that with each of the directors.
I hear you, too. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
You both hear each other. Councilmember Chua.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. On succession planning, I think we have a very good example of one that I heard from Chief of Police, because he knows exactly the number of employees that will retire, number of years, and all that. And he's been, Chief, you want to input? I'm just saying that the Chief of Police has a good succession plan.
So the Chief and I had many conversations about this. He's been very forthcoming and very direct.
And he's very direct with the council.
Sure.
And which is a good thing. We know in the number of years, we're going to have this much and this much, and I don't want to get into the detail of it, but he has a good succession plan in place.
Sure, and I would offer that that works for certain kinds of professions, and certainly in the public safety realm, you're absolutely right, because there's only a certain way that you can get from here to here.
Exactly.
I also am mindful of, as I'm sure all of you would be, that we need to take care with not creating exclusive ways to get to succession. That's my concern. That it's available and open to people who can get those skills, so that we don't inadvertently, as the mayor was asking, about what do our demographics look like in leadership versus the rest of the organization, and then comparatively, how does that look to our community? I want to make sure that we do have a diversity of leaders, and I respect the chief. He and I have talked a lot, and he's extremely thoughtful, and he's been a great advocate, and he's very wise about that. And so I appreciate it. It is a good model, good example for his department.
It's a good example, it's very strategic.
I will also offer that I think our Director of Public Works is thinking along those lines, certainly our Director of Rec and Community Services and others. And so what I'm hearing, though, is what's a formalization of that look like, so that you can trust that we're actually doing that for the sake of the long-term organization? Yeah, yeah, appreciate it. Are you just trying to get the chief up here?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to get him.
Because I could invite him to take a picture. I bet he's standing up and sitting down, standing up and sitting down.
No, I just, I.
You want to hear from him?
No, no, I know already. I don't know if you want to add to it, but it's.
Sit down.
Just say your name. No, but what I'm saying, we do have examples of good strategic succession planning in place, and that I see in the police department.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to say.
Got it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Any more questions? Remember, we still have a couple more to go. Just want to remind you.
Just trying to.
Well, just one.
Yes.
Councilmember Lam.
One last comment is, actually, we, I just learned this recently, we, as a city employee, we offer lots of training plans for employees, too. A good example is the police department. They have a lot of training classes, which I'm not sure other departments should offer that, too.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment and advocacy. If you looked at the last bucket that we had of work in the HR department, that is certainly something that I came here to support us, to be able to offer those growth and development and training opportunities to employees. Each department director is doing the best that they can to offer what they can. What I hope to do is come in behind them and offer citywide opportunities, we're just not quite there, but that's my wheelhouse. That's the thing I hope to be able to offer the city of Milpitas and our employees as we, as we move forward. So thank you for lending support to that.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. I don't see any more. Thank you, Kelly.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we.
Mayor, we still need to open the public hearing.
Anyone from the public would like to speak on that item?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and City Manager and Staff, Voltaire Montemayor of Milpitas. Yeah, I learned a lot today. Few years, demographics were happy, more local applicants than the whole of California. That's very good. Now, it's reverse osmosis on the, instead of rate of unemployment, we have the rate of vacancies. It's good to hear that. And now, if I compete, anyway, I could still, I was fixing my car, so I could probably apply for the public works, but maybe not. Maybe because of the age. Now, did I, when we say, there was one there, I just go to the proactive action. I think it's not because there's no civil service competition of all the applicants, and not even the AA or affirmative action probably, so thank you, I don't think there's affirmative action. And we mentioned diversity, so the affirmative action should not be there. So, great, this is, I know it's hard to find jobs, so if people know that we have a lot of vacancies in Milpitas, then there will be no more vacancies. Anyway, good job, the SR manager and all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montemayor. Okay, thank you also, Kelly. And now, we're going to be pulling, I'll call on staff for the items C5.
We have to officially close the public hearing, Mayor?
Closing the public hearing, thank you very much. And now, we'll call on staff for the items C5.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, C5 is noted in the agenda is the second quarter financial status report for the quarter ending December 31st, 2024. And we have our Finance Director, Lou Skafrezi Howe, here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Good evening, Councilmembers Mayor Montano, Vice Mayor Barbarbadillo, Councilmember Chua, Leanne, and Lam. I don't have a presentation, as this is a consent item, but I am obviously here to your pleasure to answer any questions.
So, William, do you have a comment? Councilmember Lam, I mean.
Yeah, I was hoping to see the second quarter financial status report. Yeah, I'd like to see the revenues, the expenditures, and probably all those extra expenses we have to spend on the last quarters.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lam, I'm not quite sure what your question is.
Basically, I want to see a, a, kind of a, I'm not sure you have a slide or presentations on the expenditures and incomes. Since this is a financial status report, I expect to see, you know, what are the incomes for the quarters and expenditures, and are we balanced, or are we in the negative or positive in the balance sheets?
Well, it is difficult. First of all, their revenues and expenditures are in the agenda report. So, but we wouldn't be balanced in the middle of the year. Our revenues and expenditures are cyclical. So a really good example is, we haven't gotten the sales tax, well, actually, we might have, we might have just gotten the sales tax for the last quarter of last year, the reconciliation of that. We haven't gotten property tax for this year, which is also big bumps in, in, in two different periods. I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what else you would like, because we can certainly provide whatever you want. We just need a little bit more direction.
When I see second quarter financial status report, I assume you guys do a quarter report every quarter, and I would like to see the detail of the reports.
This is the detail that we provide on a quarterly basis to the council. And if you like, I can, if we have the level of detail of the, I'm just trying to figure out. I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just trying to figure out exactly what you're looking for.
Well, I'd like to, the public also experience what I see also. Okay, you have, on the attachment, I see a general fund expenditure by Department Financial Status for best goal year to date, December 31st, 2024. So I expect, like, you go over this page.
So.
So the public will realize how we spend the money, where's the money come from, and things like that.
So the information is provided in written format for the public. It's a format that's fairly standard, and is generally on the consent items. I can certainly go over this in detail if you have specific questions, but I'm not, again, I would like some, have some assistance on exactly the information that you're looking for, because this is essentially, we would present tables in a presentation, and this is not usually what we do, is this is sort of operating business.
So Director, do we have, do we have that, the hard copy on PowerPoint?
I don't have a presentation at all.
Don't have a presentation for this?
No, because.
If I may, this is on the consent calendar, because it's considered a routine item. We do it on a quarterly basis, and it provides the information in a summarized form. We have all the expenditures, all the revenues and all the expenditures according to the budget. It's a snapshot in time for the period from October to December of last year.
So, so if we have any, that, it would have been nice to have a PowerPoint, so that way we could have been, so if you're saying that item five doesn't have a PowerPoint, and item six does not have a PowerPoint as well, right?
That's correct.
So if that's the case, I would maybe defer this for the next meeting? I'm not sure. What would you like to do?
I definitely like to have a presentation on this, um, financial status report. Yeah, can you have it on the next council meeting?
Of course, Councilmember, through the mayor and through the city manager, we can have that, of course.
Yeah.
And if you have anything in particular that you would like me to address, please feel free to reach out to me, or through the city manager, and we can provide that.
I think his main concern is that the public needs to hear, would like, he would like the public to see what, you know, the review of the mid-year report.
And if I might, what we can do is take the staff report that's here and the attachments and summarize those in a PowerPoint. The information, I will say, though, that the information will not be any different for the public or for the council than what is already provided to you in the staff report. Again, this is considered a relatively routine item that is brought to the council on a quarterly basis. We do have a larger, at the end of the year, when we reconcile the entire budget, we do have a larger presentation that is done at that time, but not usually done on a quarterly basis. This is standard procedure for probably going back decades at the city.
And so, Councilmember Chua, did you have your, did you want to, are you saying something?
I agree with Councilmember Lam to defer this until there's a formal presentation, because this, this, I think, is like the quarter end, yeah, because that kind of gives us a picture. This is important. This is the last quarter of 2024, which is very much precursor to the budget thing. Yeah.
And you'll get a lot of discussion about bumpy revenues and bumpy expenditures, because these things aren't, we don't get property tax every month.
Yeah.
You know, and so you're going to have to be, and I'll walk you through that, but you probably will come up with questions, and I always invite them.
Yeah, I think, I think Councilmember Lam wants to defer it, and actually, I just had, I went to a cities association meeting, and we had the county executive speak, and it, it was kind of like a gloom and doom report, because everything comes from the federal government, to the state, to the county, to the cities, and I just feel that the projections, they don't look good, the economy, the projections for the economy. And we really, really need to kind of hone in on, you know, what's going on with our budget, because we don't want to, you know, we don't want to go to the extremes. We want to make sure that everyone has a safe job. We want to make sure that our citizens are being served. We got to be prepared, because the horizon does not look good.
Yeah.
And I think we all know that.
Yeah.
So we want to, we just being proactive, and if you can do a PowerPoint for the next we defer it, I think that's what he wants, is a PowerPoint.
And I'm assuming that, we will continue to do that.
We really need to be proactive. It doesn't look good at all. So is there a motion to?
Mayor, you'd need public comment first, and then we could take a motion.
Okay, public comment on this item, or these items, or this item, right there?
Yeah, Voltaire Montemayor, yeah. Few years, we need few years, like, I know it's complicating with the end of the year, like fiscal year, let's say, and calendar year, but it's still, as suggested by the City Council, there should be a breakdown of per quarter, like, the second quarter for 24, 25 is October to December, as was said. So it's good to know, thank you.
Thank you for that. We have. My glasses. Councilmember Lam?
Okay, yeah, why don't I sell a motion to have the Director of Finance to present to us the general fund expenditure for the quarter of, the second quarter of last, from September to December of last year's?
So you want to defer this item for the next?
Yes, I want to defer this.
Just to clarify, that needs to come through the city manager. The council doesn't direct the finance director.
What, how do we do that? How does he do that?
You would just, what you can make a motion for is to move to defer this item. That's something the council can do.
That's what we asked, that's what he asked.
And we'll bring it back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
So I move to defer this item to next council meeting.
To the city manager, to, well, reword that again.
The motion would just be to defer it to a future city council meeting.
Is there a second here?
Second.
So, okay, so it was moved by Councilmember Lam and seconded by Councilmember Chua. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbarbadillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, so now, the next item is C6. Is that, would you like to do the same thing, is that with that?
Yeah, I would like to do the same thing, defer it. defer this item to the next council meeting.
Is there a second?
Sorry, Mayor, you
Oh, we have to do public comment.
Public comment first.
Public comment on item six, C six. Anyone from the public? No, see none? Okay.
A second.
So it was moved by Councilmember Lam, seconded by Councilmember Chua, and now we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Barbadillo?
Before I vote, isn't there an attachment on the on the
Yeah.
There's a reservation.
No.
C six.
Yeah, this one. There's a report.
Where is the attachment? You click on the item, so
So we'll still defer it? Okay, I'll agree to defer it.
Yeah, just defer.
Okay. Oh, yes, sorry.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you so much.
And now, next, we'll move on to announcements and future agenda items. City manager, do you have any?
I have no announcements tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. And now, councilmembers, do you have anything, any announcements? We have
I just have one. The city attorney, to look into a policy to, for any deduction to the reserve that would, it would require a super majority or votes, not majority.
Okay, anyone else? We have Councilmember Barbadillo.
All right, last month
I mean, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
That's fine, Mayor. Last month, and this is always toying in my mind, last month, San Francisco passed a fentanyl state of emergency ordinance. And, you know, last November, California Governor, California in conjunction with federal agents seized about 1.7 million pills of fentanyl. You know, DEA reported in 2024, I think this is the data, that this is about fifty, more than 55 million in pills and 8,000 pounds in powder. I know it's, you know, it's escaping the news right now, but I want to see if there is something that, you know, we can have a policy, a policy program or ordinance about fentanyl. You know, I've done my research. The only thing that we had is fires website that, you know, that explains fentanyl awareness. I haven't seen anything from the school district, but I believe this is still a, I might be wrong with the school district. I just check it. But I still, I think this is still a an issue that we shouldn't take for granted with, right? I haven't heard anything in Milpitas, but you know, the statistics with regards to California at least is still alarming. So I would like to see if there is something, you know, we can look at the state emergency ordinance of San Francisco to join the effort to make sure that, you know, fentanyl doesn't come to our kids or in Milpitas. Last year, I believe, 13 inmates from yeah, yeah, so that if we can bring back something, talking points, policies, ordinance regarding fentanyl.
And the point of clarification I wanted was specifically related to a declaration of a state of emergency related to that issue?
You know, San Francisco has its reasons why it had that state of emergency ordinance. All I'm asking is to see what we can do to join the effort from the feds, from California, from San Francisco, not to make sure that fentanyl does not come to Milpitas. I defer to City Attorney's Office.
I understand that the proposal that's being put on for prioritization is a more generalized issue as to proposals of things that could be done related to fentanyl at the city level.
So Vice Mayor, would this be a discussion on preventing bringing fentanyl to Milpitas?
I think that's a good start, but I don't know what we can arrive at after the discussion or after a research. Something tangible, maybe?
So I want to piggyback on that. So I did ask the chief, Jason Shunover, a while back about how many fentanyl cases we had. And do you have that number? That might help in your orders. Never mind, it's not time for that, we can't. It's out of order.
Yeah, but
Okay.
If you'd like us to bring something back and it will obviously be the city attorney's office, but he will need to work with both police and fire and maybe others. It's likely it may take us more than four hours. So we can certainly look into that and we can either bring some information item back to you or if it's going to take a little longer, then
And we'll need to call for consensus on this item. We'll need to call for consensus on this item.
We'll need public comment on the item and also council consensus.
So we'll bring it back.
Okay.
So calling for consensus, Vice Mayor Barbadillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. And for the previous one, we could go consensus again.
Vice Mayor Barbadillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne?
Do we take funds from the reserve?
Oh, to have a cap, to have a cap. Okay, so we didn't vote on it, okay. Yes, aye.
Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, do, Councilmember Lam, do you have a oh, okay, and we have, no? Okay, so I I do have one and that is, I know you, I had asked our city, Assistant City Manager if I should bring it up or not since it's already kind of in the pipeline. But I know in the pipeline it's going to take three years and that's for the that's for the police office. So that way our officers can go have another place so they can do their reports and go to the bathroom. So I'm going to put that on the, on the announcements as one of the items. So at least it's on record.
We can add that to the prioritization list. We will
Need a consensus for that.
Like some description of what it is we're adding to it? I've just got police office.
To do yeah, feasibility study for a police office. It's not really a substation, it's more like an office. Yeah. Okay, police satellite office, yeah. So I need a consensus.
Vice Mayor Barbadillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Chua?
Aye.
Councilmember Lam?
Aye.
Councilmember Leanne? Sorry.
Really aye.
Aye. Councilmember Leanne? Mayor Montano?
And I am an aye. Okay, anyone else have any announcements? Okay, happy Lunar New Year, the Year of the Snake, everybody. We'll see you again next time. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone, good night.